It's six thirty, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole, Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities Meeting, Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Now, the first item we have is a Declaration of Confidentiality for the Citizens Advisory Members, and I see we only have one here tonight, Mr. Packwood, and I believe our CIO, Ms. McDunster, will look after the oath. Thank you.
Thank you. Just by way of background, the Committee of the Whole, both in Finance and Public Works, has Advisory Members, and they are entitled to vote at these committees and are entitled to stay for closed-session items, but we've changed our procedural bylaw recently to require them to declare the same oath of confidentiality as the elected members have to swear in order to fulfill their duties. The Advisory Members are not required to do this, they can opt out at the closed session, but I believe Mr. Packwood has agreed that he would like to do this, so that he can have access to those closed-session items. So, I would ask you to just repeat after me, Mr. Packwood. I, Mark Packwood.
I, Mark Packwood.
Having been appointed to the Committee of the Whole.
Having been committed to appoint to the Committee in the form of my actual Public Works.
Let me hold it further away. Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities.
Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities.
As a Citizen Advisory Member.
As a Citizen Advisory Member.
Do hereby declare.
I do hereby declare.
That I will not disclose to any person.
That I will not disclose to any person.
Any information or document.
Any information or documents.
arising from confidential meetings of the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal.
From confidential meetings of the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal?
That come to my knowledge or possession.
That come to my knowledge or possession.
By reason of those meetings.
By reason of those meetings.
Except if the information or document.
Except if the information or document.
Has otherwise already been properly made public.
Otherwise, or, or, here, otherwise? Otherwise already been properly made public.
And I make this solemn promise.
And I make this solemn promise.
And declaration.
Declaration.
Conscientiously believing it to be true.
Conscientiously believing it to be true.
And knowing that it is of the same force and effect.
And knowing that it's the same force and effect.
As it made under oath.
As it made under oath.
Thank you very much, sir. Sign it.
Thanks, ma'am.
And we'll do Mr. Packwood at the next meeting with you.
Thank you, Madam CIO, thank you, thank you, Mr. Packwood. We will move on then with the approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover, please?
So, no.
I have a mover, Mayor Seale and Second Deputy Mayor Deshaun. You, any discussion regarding the agenda? Any additions? Thank you. Could I, I'm going to call the question, approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, carry. Number three, disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof, do I have any?
None.
Hearing none, thank you, moving on. Now, business arriving from previous Public Works, Environmental Services and Facilities Committee Meeting. Okay, hearing none at the moment, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
So, first one, on page two of six, on page two of six, we discussed the Jones Towns Servicing Survey, and the plan was that staff would mail the survey to registered property owners after the May twenty-seventh council meeting. Do we know if that, if that got out the door?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the Chair, I'm sorry, no, that has not yet been done. We have been researching methods by which we could get responses online, and I believe that the Community Development Coordinator just got that nailed down last week, so we should be prepared to do that very soon.
Okay, so, my understanding then is, to the Chair if I may?
You may.
My understanding then is that we will do it in both methods, both online and by mail?
That's right.
Okay, do we have a way of avoiding duplication?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, that's the first question.
Go ahead with your next.
Second question comes on page four of six, and on page four of six, we had dealt with a request from a farmer, actually, with respect to a access to agricultural land on concession twelve, lot twelve concession three, and we directed this down to develop an agreement with the owner, and I'm just wondering if that farmer got the agreement in place that he was seeking, through the Chair if I may?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, the agreement has been drafted, it has not yet been signed up on by the owner.
Okay, so, do we know the extent of the improvements, if any, that he intends to make to run open road loans?
I believe it's just clearing, but I defer to the Director of Operations for more specifics.
Thank you. From my understanding, it is just tree clearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do. And that's on page five of six, and on page five of six, we canceled a tender for the purchase of a vehicle, and I believe we left it in the hands of staff to proceed by, according to our procurement policy under bylaw twenty fifteen fifty-seven. So, my question through the Chair if I may, is, has the vehicle been purchased, and if so, do we know the purchase price?
Once again, I believe that the Road Superintendent has been working on that, I don't know if he has come to an arrangement yet, but perhaps the Director of Operations has a more up-to-date input on that.
Certainly, through the Chair, things will hopefully be finalized later this week.
So, through the Chair if I could, so, can we have a report back as to the, to the details of the purchase, when the purchase is in effect executed, and know the pricing that we've undertaken? And could we have that at the next opportunity, or the first opportunity after the purchase is completed?
Through the Chair, I can put that, if it gets completed this week, we'll have it on the CIO's report at council next Monday night, otherwise, it'll be the first opportunity after.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor?
I have one, CIO, page two of six or three of the computer, seven A, second paragraph, we went over the boiler, and I don't think the power source, it was noted that the boiler had a two-year warranty, and I feel that, I think Mr. Spencer was looking into it, I think it's more, it's a bigger warranty than that, but he's looking into that, is that right, Mr. Spencer?
Through the Chair, yes, I was supposed to meet last Wednesday with Morrisburg Plumbing and Heating, and something came up, something came up at their end, and we've scheduled to meet this week, and I will, at that time, have all the documentation for the warranty with.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, do you have anything? Counselor Hunter?
Just one, I guess mainly to our mayor, we required a better runoff in counties for the sign, County Route Twenty-One, but have we heard anything from county, or yet heard any more about it?
So, through the Chair, I think the last report that I made was that I had spoken with the Director of Operations or the Director of Public Works at the county, and that he had indicated he'd bring a report back, he didn't really indicate when, he indicated that he had finished his examination and his meetings, and I'm thinking that he's intending to bring his report to the Committee of the Whole meeting in July, but I don't have a confirmation on that, but I know that he wants to get this off his plate as well.
Mr. Packwood? Okay, I have, I have just a couple, I'd like some information on, the first one is on page two, regarding the pool steps, and if I could just ask the Manager of Recreation if those have been installed as yet?
Yes, they were installed two weeks ago, and everything was finished off this week, and we're just in the midst of filling the pool up right now.
Okay, great, and I understand you're going to have an inspection on the twenty-second?
The pool inspections for both pools are on the nineteenth.
Okay.
Which is this one, as they have.
Thank you, thank you. And one other item, just to bring up, the speed bumps, they are completed, I have looked at them and seen them, and they look good, so there are speed bumps on Legion Way now. And the last item I have is just under section eight on page five of six, there is a, just in the first sentence, it is noted, note that the UCLG still has not established no parking signage, or any parking signage.
Should be a gold mark, should be no parking.
No parking, okay, I understand, thank you. And that's all I have. Okay, we'll move on now to delegations and presentations, and I just would like to point out at the moment that we have three delegations tonight, so if we could keep our delegations as short and as quick as possible, that would certainly be appreciated. The first delegation is the Source Water Protection, and I believe Mr. LeVere is going to speak to that, and Mr. LeVere, would you introduce your people with you, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Council, good evening, Mayor Seale. My name, for those of you who may not know me, is Lawrence LeVere, I represent Leeds and Grenville to the Raisin Region, South Nation Source Water Protection Committee. In two thousand and seven, when I was on council, Mayor Deshaun sent me to a meeting to find out about this committee, and one way or another, I have not acted on it ever since. The committee was struck by provincial mandate late in two thousand and seven in response to what had happened in Waukatoon, where agricultural runoff entered a defective municipal well, as a result, hundreds of citizens became ill and five died. The mandate of the Source Water Protection Committee was and is to ensure that municipal water systems are properly protected, so this type of disaster can never, ever happen again. I'd like to introduce a couple of people that are here tonight. Ray Vorgard, the Chair of the Raisin Region Source Water Protection Committee, we have Sandra Mancini, Staff, South Nation Conservation, Phil Barnes, Staff of Raisin Region, and our Project Manager, and we have Peggy Taylor with us, who is on the Board of Directors, South Nation Conservation, and liaison between the Source Water Protection and the South Nation Board. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. The first slide, and you can see it shows South Nation jurisdiction, the Source Water Protection Program started around two thousand and four, and there is a partnership between the two cities, South Nation and Raisin Region, and they formed the Raisin-South Nation Conservation Authority. Phil is here today, he is the Project Manager, and he will go through the program.
Thank you very much. So, as Mr. LeVere has told you, the Clean Water Act is the reason why we're here. The Clean Water Act was passed by the Province of Ontario in two thousand and six as a result of that Waukatoon tragedy, where many were ill and several died. The purpose of the Clean Water Act is to protect municipally-owned sources of drinking water, and the Clean Water Act requires municipalities to prepare source protection plans to address any drinking water threats that may occur near their sources of drinking Municipalities invest a lot of money in their own infrastructure to provide safe drinking water to their citizens. Then, a local committee was struck with local representatives, from each representing municipal interests, commercial interests, agricultural interests, as well as the general public. They were the representatives on our committee, and they are the ones that wrote policies to address activities that could inadvertently contaminate the drinking water supplies in our region. Combined, this is a map of our combined source protection region, the green being South Nations area, the gray is a raisin area. In total, there are seventeen different municipalities that we work with to protect their municipal drinking water sources, there are twenty-five different wells or surface water intakes that we work on, and these source protection plans all came into effect, legal effect, in two thousand and five. Two thousand and fifteen, sorry. In Edwardsburg Cardinal, there are two municipal drinking water sources that we protect. The first one is a little bit unique, it's a small facility on Innsboroughville called the Maples, their water treatment system is owned, is owned by the United Counties right now, and so, the United Counties is obliged to protect that drinking water system to the standard of the provincial source protection plans, and so, we look at the area that could contribute contamination to that well, and we work with the landowners in that area to ensure that the activities that they're doing is not going to contaminate that well water source. Additionally, the main intake for Cardinal's water treatment plant, we've done some scientific analysis on that intake, and we work with landowners who are engaged in activities that may contaminate the drinking water, and we negotiated risk management plans where necessary to ensure that the water stays clear from contamination. There was a new regulation that was passed in two thousand and eighteen, we have had the opportunity to talk with your staff during last summer to bring them up to speed. Basically, that's saying that if there is going to be a new municipal drinking water source in any municipality, that new source has to adhere to these new standards of source water protection, and there will be some additional scientific work that needs to be done to evaluate where those sources of contamination may come from, and so, there will be collaboration between municipal staff and source protection staff to ensure that those requirements are met before the Minister can allow that source to provide water to the municipality.
And because we mentioned the water treatment plant, this is just an update, so you know that in two thousand and seventeen, the water treatment plant had to be protected against flooding from the San Lawrence River, it was high water levels, so, in partnership between South Nation and Township Estelle, we applied for the federal funding, National Disaster Mitigation Program, and we were successful, we obtained the funding, and now we are working in the flood mitigation to protect the structure from flood. So, the idea is, this is shown in the map, this is the project status, so, it was a design done, and this berm is going to be located around the water treatment plant. The elevation of the berm is going to be one one-hundred-year flood plain plus thirty centimeters, that is a freeboard. So, where we are now, it was tendered, prepared by the Township Estelle, and only two contractors attended the meeting, and the closing of the tender is on June eighteenth, and after it will be brought to council for approval at the next meeting. Regarding flood forecasting and warning, I wanted to give you an update, Lake Ontario is still high, so we are going to see high water levels for the rest of the summer. Ontario Power Generation in Sanders Station is still letting a lot of flow go through, it's ten thousand four hundred cubic meters per hour, and that's.
Second. Second.
Second, second, yes, and that's very high, it's as high as it was in two thousand and seventeen. However, they are noticing, International Lake Ontario, San Lawrence River board, they noticed that there is only one centimeter of variation in the water level in Lake Ontario, it is, they drop one centimeter with the flows, and after giving a rain event, a centimeter comes up again, so it's going to take a long time, but they are, they are saying that by the end of the summer, they are going to have normal water levels. So, and that's all, if you have any questions, we are happy to answer.
Go ahead. So, through the Chair, I'm really interested in the berm that's going to be going around the water treatment plant.
Yes.
Is the Township the lead on that project, are we the ones that are tendering, we tendered?
Yes.
We will open the tenders and we will supervise?
Yes.
And then, South Nation has arranged the financial contribution?
Yes, we have the, we have an agreement with the federal for the funding this coming, and the fifty percent of that funding is from the Township.
Okay, so it's a fifty-fifty split?
Fifty-fifty.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions, or Counsel? I think we got off easy tonight, son.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Well, I have one question, one personal question, just before they leave, because you're raisin on South Nations, right? And so, you've identified the water source for the Cardinal Water Treatment Plant.
Yes.
Is there a similar plan for the Prescott Water Treatment Plant, either South Nation or raisin?
Raisin, yes, there is exactly a similar process for Prescott's Water Treatment Plant. In fact, in our combined jurisdiction, there are twenty-five different water treatment plants that would have gone through that similar process, so there's, there's protection zones for Prescott, there's protection zones for Edwardsburg Cardinal, Morrisburg, Long Sioux, City of Cornwall, Lancaster, Glen Walter, all the way down the San Lawrence River. And then, once you get out of South Nation's jurisdiction, as you continue upstream, that's Katerakui Conservation, so there's similar programs for Brockville, there's a well in Mallory Town, and then, you're getting into Kingston, Quinte Belville, so everybody, everybody in the Province of Ontario has a similar protection plan.
That's even though they're not a member of Saint Nation or of Raisin Region, because it's, it's under source water protection, not under conservation, so that's how they got, they got caught in that loop, which is a good thing, because they wanted to cover it.
Yeah.
Good, well, thank you, thank you again, thank you so much, and if you so desire, you may stay for our meeting, or you can, you can choose to get an early supper.
Now it's bad enough to stay.
Just a moment, just a moment.
Mr. Chairman, just before the delegation leaves, I'd just like to recognize the fact that Lawrence LeVere, who introduced the delegation, has been involved with Source Water Protection since, I think he said, two thousand and seven.
Yeah.
That's twelve years he's been working on this, and I also want to recognize the fact that Peggy Taylor also served on that before going on to this delegation.
I've been there since the beginning.
You've been there since the beginning as well.
Yeah.
Lot of work done over that period of time.
If I may, I think that's important to note, that it's local work, it wasn't dictated from Toronto, they look for local people, and Edwardsburg Cardinal has been well represented.
Thank you, and I'd just like to make one further observation, both Ms. Taylor and Mr. LeVere have served on council here at Edwardsburg Cardinal, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, again. All right, we're going to move on, and our second delegation is regarding the SBCC Art Ramble, and it's a request for closing Water Street. Now, Mary Moore is not with us tonight, but I understand Hannah Lee will make a brief presentation, I think you've all had a chance to read the letter that was submitted, so I believe it's just a quick information item.
Thank you very much for hearing us, we are here to ask you to close Water Street for our event, which takes place July fourteenth, it's called Art Ramble, and it's being put on by the Centerville Business and Community Connections, who would like Water Street between Spencer and South Street to be closed for the duration of the festival, which is ten AM to five PM that day, but we would, of course, leave access for the Hutton family to get into their property.
And ambulance and emergency vehicles.
Of course, yes.
Okay, now, this, this item will be dealt with tonight under item seven C in the action information items, so, if you'd like to, you can stay for that, for that, and see how it turns out, or again.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any questions for the committee? I think it's straightforward, thank you, thank you, we'll deal with it at seven C. Now, our next, our next delegation is the SLC EDC, and I would like to call on Mayor Seale to introduce some members from this committee, if you would, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, so I'm going to introduce the Chair of the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission, who's Mr. Dave Beatty, Mr. Beatty just put his hand, but just to remind members at the table here, the commission was established, I think it was July of seventeen, I think seventeen, but the way the commission is structured, each of the seven mayors of the seven participating municipalities sit on the Board of the Commission, and then, each of the municipalities nominated and directed a representative from the industrial field to sit on the commission as well, so, Mr. Beatty is the industrial representative from the city of Brockville, and he's been the Chair of the commission since its inception, and I'll let Mr. Beatty introduce the other members with him this evening.
Thank you very much, Mayor Seale, Chair Cameron, Counselors, Deputy Mayor Cardinal, staff, it's a pleasure to be able to present and update the activities of the corridor. As Mayor Seale mentioned, we're almost two years old, we were incorporated in July of two thousand and seventeen, for the first six or eight months, we're doing some organizational things, bylaws and admissions and websites and all of those things in play, we're actively looking for our Industrial Commissioner, and in February of two thousand and eighteen, we were successfully hired our Industrial Commissioner, who I'll introduce in a few minutes, so, less than a year and a half, we've had staff on board for the corridor. The corridor is only mandated, marketing organization, and we only have commercial industrial activities as part of contracting, commercial industrial facilities to the corridor region is the only reason we exist. Tourism, retail, residential, all of that is handled by others in the economic development, and we're, the United Counties, Rob Nolan, Dana Valentine, others that are involved with economic development, work very closely in partnership with the corridor, and we've established very good relations, and we think we've had some good successes, which we're going to hear from you in a few minutes. So, I'll introduce Michael Adamcrick, Michael was instrumental in getting the seven municipalities, Leeds and the Thousand Islands on the west, to Edwardsburg Cardinal on the east, along the four oh one, all together, no one municipality has all of the services, the infrastructure that industry needs. The whole premise of the corridor is success in one area benefits all, so when Giant Tire comes in to Edwardsburg Cardinal, Prescott, Brockville, others along the Leeds and Grenville four oh one corridor, all benefit, and having, Charlie's job is to get them interested in the corridor region, where they decide to locate, whether it's in your industrial park, Brockville's industrial park, maintenance facility, that is up to the potential industrial commercial client to say, yes, this is the best region. So, without further ado, Michael Adamcrick, as I say, Michael was very instrumental in organizing the whole corridor region, getting everybody together, and he still provides a lot of executive and administrative support to the corridor. Charlie Minyon is our only employee, our only, and not even, I shouldn't use the word employee, our only contract paid person, the only guy that gets really paid for this organization, we have one person that reports to the Board, that person is Charlie, and he has been here since February of two thousand and eighteen, so almost a year and a half, and he'll start to tell you about some of his sessions, so Charlie and Michael, give us a presentation, because we don't have much time.
Okay. Steve?
So, thank you, Chairman Cameron, your worship, members of council, we do appreciate your time this evening, you're very fortunate, as Mr. Beatty went through five of the first eight slides, so we don't need to do those. Much more. so we don't need to do those much more eloquently than we could. And he's not read the detailed slide, so that tells you how much he's embedded in this process. So give you a little bit of agenda. So first of all, we're going to start by thanking you for your support since two thousand and seventeen. I have the distinct privilege, as David said, of helping organize. As one of the mayors who no longer has their position told me, "We will succeed as a group, and you could be the only failure," is how this was presented to me to take this on. And fortunately, we succeeded as a group. Very much group effort, there was no one person that was successful. But we are thankful for your cooperation, your participation. We're here to talk a little bit about financing, but financing is only a small portion of it. Mayor Seo indicated that there's two representatives, so the mayor is a representative and the industrial rep. The interesting thing is that financially, it is not equal the contributions, but the voting at the table is equal. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But we're here to request your continued support. So I came two thousand and seventeen with a three-year mandate, and then one-year renewals after that. So one of the reasons we're here, to provide information, but also ask for your support on continuing at four dollars financial per capita, per year, and also your continued support with putting two people at the boardroom table, which is also important to us. As we talked a little bit, one of the things we'd like to highlight is that we are a sales and marketing organization. I tend to say we are not economic development. Economic development is a lot more than sales and marketing. It's all the other things that go on. Sales and marketing, though, does have a cycle to it. It does have a timeline. So we'd like to point out, as we indicated, the organization's been around since about July, June of two thousand and seventeen we were incorporated. Charlie will speak in a few minutes about his activities. Started in February of two thousand and eighteen. The time cycle, if everything goes perfectly, is about four hundred days from the time you first contact an organization till they make a commitment. So when we add that in of where we are today, we're not quite through those four hundred days. One of the things that we, as much as you and all the constituents, want are jobs, and we want to know who those companies are. But a little bit of this is deferred gratification. We'll talk a bit how that works. So we'll go back. We have seven municipalities at the table, and plus one non-voting participant, which is St. Lawrence College. So they are at the boardroom table as a non-voting entity. Our mission, as we talked about industrial and commercial, so we're not tourism, we are not truly economic development. We're sales and marketing to attract industrial and commercial entities to improve the quantity and quality of jobs that are available in our area. So we are lead generation. So from start to finish, it's how do we get people interested in our community? And once we start telling people the types of services, the great thing about having seven municipalities is that they have an opportunity in one municipality offset by the strengths of another. So you happen to be fortunate in land, you happen to be fortunate in some of the people that live in your area. So other places can be bedroom communities to help serve those entities that locate in your area. So those are the kinds of synergies that we look for. We are attraction. So our main goal is to attract new companies. We will help companies grow where there would be a distinct difference in the way that company would be, and Charlie will talk a little bit. Essentially, might have the same name on the door, but everything else about that company's probably going to change in the next eighteen months. So selective business growth. Also involves a lot of relationship building. None of this happens very fast. You hear about sales pipeline and sales funnel, probably an overused word in our internet generation, electronic sales funnel. This is a very relationship sales funnel. We use this graphical representation. You see it on the left, yep, your left still, the entry point. So we've got a lot of ball bearings going in, and then they start converting to better opportunities. And then on the right-hand side, we see them exiting to people and companies and entities that have decided to land here. And that whole process takes, if everything goes well, four hundred days, and at any one point, you could have a company drop off in there. So that's where we like to match up the opportunities that we've had in the timeline of the corridor and the actual reality of dealing in a complex business-to-business sales environment. So we showed you the previous one with the silver balls, and this one has the green balls. So these green balls are a graphical representation of what our pipeline looks like today. So we've got a whole bunch on the left-hand side in the entry or the top end of the sales funnel, where we've identified opportunities, we've likely made contact. In the middle, where we're building really strong relationships and starting to understand better what those companies need. And then on the right, you can see we've got a couple that are really, really close. Exit might not be a great word, because they're actually entering our area. But we've got a couple that are really close with significant job opportunities that we're hoping to announce over the next couple of months. So we've got a very solid pipeline that Charlie's built over those short days, eighteen months in his job. And one of the things that I like to boldly say is that this is about regionalism. And I think for anybody that was here in two thousand and seventeen, one of the things I've told every council I've spoken to, that if you don't believe in regionalism, you do not believe that regionalism is an opportunity for Eastern Ontario, that we're probably not the right organization for you. You've taken a very distinct leadership position by stating that regionalism is for you, that there are opportunities to build upon the strengths of others and to help them offset their opportunities. Because when it comes down to it, a business does not care about political borders. They care about success. So we have to help them blur those borders. We've heard, and I always hesitate when I'm in front of council, but we're hearing the words of amalgamation and all of those types of things in the news, and what those really are forced ways about regionalism. I truly believe that there's opportunities for regionalism in big and small ways that we can influence directly, and you are already sitting in an opportunity for regionalism that's proving success. So regionalism is the future. We're going to hear a lot more of it over the next few years in big and small ways. But the St. Lawrence Corridor Economic Development Commission is a proven representative of regionalism. We've shown that we can be a regional opportunity, but still provide local success. And your municipality is very integral to that success. You have two very powerful people at the boardroom table who provide governance and direction and outside counsel, and then also a financial contribution, which is important. So I'll quickly highlight some of the commitments that we made to you when we first sat here from a strategic point of view, so pretty high level. We promised you that we were going to be an information source. When companies came to the region, we would be the source of information for industrial and commercial. We've done very well with gathering information. So Charlie now has a pile of information that he can use to disseminate. One of the places that we have not had success is, how do we take that corporate knowledge that's certainly currently located in a few people's head and make sure that we can disseminate in an efficient way? And over the next few years, we have to figure out how to do that. The example I always use is, a customer comes to us and they need thirty-foot ceilings, they need thirty thousand square feet with refrigeration. Where do you go for that information? And then they need twenty employees with refrigeration experience to work in there. So those kinds of things, right now, we don't have a good way that anybody in our organization could get anybody that information. So we're still working on that. Stakeholders, as David pointed out, we're an organization essentially of one person on the front line. So stakeholders, we tended to, we had a broad view of how we were going to deal with this. We were going to be everything for everybody all the time. What it really turned out to be is that we work with stakeholders on an opportunistic manner. So when the opportunities came up, such as the Bioinnovation Canada, became a very large stakeholder, and we worked with them. The Green Center in Kingston, at Launch Labs in Kingston. So opportunistic, we built very good and strong stakeholders. But some places, we have not built them quite as well as your CAO can attest to. We probably haven't not got enough information to the bureaucratic team that we need as markers on the floor. So we're going to work harder at that. As your CAO quite said to me, that she should. Labor pool. The, it's interesting. I would not have stood here five years ago and said that labor shortage or the shortage of skills would be a problem in our area, because we just need more jobs. Actually, now what we have is a skills gap. And so it's great, we've identified it, but we have not provided a solution yet. And the board may have to decide, is that past the scope? And is that something that this group should be working on? So I went pretty quickly through that, because I really feel the thing that you want to hear about is attraction, retention, and growth. So I'm going to hand it over to Charlie, who's the gentleman on the front line, is the Commissioner of the organization, to talk about attraction, retention, and growth.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us here today and for giving us your time. We really appreciate it, and really, I think we have an important message I want to share tonight. I'll start by saying, it's a privilege for me to work with this group of people, with Mayor Seo, Brendan Bland, and Mr. Beatty. Michael, it's an incredible team of volunteers that are all working together. I teach in the business school at Queens as well, and I was in the past. When Michael came to me, and when I talked to Mr. Beatty, I was amazed that a group of municipalities would all get together and share resources and share insights and share leadership to create a beacon that would attract quality jobs and companies globally to come here. And that mandate is what inspired me to join up and to come and to work on it. And it's what motivates me every day, is the idea of creating quality jobs for people in Eastern Ontario, so that we can enjoy collectively more prosperity. And so I think it's a great goal, and we have great leadership and incredible volunteers. Frankly, I couldn't pay for Mr. Beatty's time. And yet, he's willing to talk to me every day if I need him, and people like that, Mayor Seo, et cetera. So it's a great privilege to be here, and I'm really excited about the opportunities that are happening and that are existing in the future. So Michael alluded, and so did David, to the idea that we're an attraction machine. And so we focus on sales and marketing, contemporary sales and marketing initiatives and tactics that we know are successful. And what I'll say over the last fifteen months or so is the idea that there is proof of concept. We're having traction with a number of companies, and things are going really well on the attraction side. And so our pipeline is filled up, and as Michael alluded to, things are moving through the system at a really strong pace, as far as I'm concerned. Okay, so expansion and retention. So we've identified approximately ten companies in Eastern Ontario that we think are missing capabilities or missing something that will allow them to scale up exponentially and double in size. And so we're working with a number of companies in the area to help fill a gap somewhere. It might be financing, it might be skills capabilities, management capabilities. It may be support in terms of government help. And so we're working with a number of those companies that have some gap in their capabilities. And we may bring an outside consultant in, I may do some support, perhaps someone from our board. We work together in the ecosystem to support growth opportunities regionally. We know that tomorrow's economy is different than yesterday's economy. And we know that the branch plant economy that was so strong, you know, the post-war, sort of post-fortist economy, is vanished. And we need to make sure we're working with local people who are committed to the area to help them grow as well. And so we're doing that actively and have a number of customers in that area that we're assisting. None of this happens with a strong partnership system, an ecosystem, as it were, where we can work with partners. So we work with local economic development folks. As Michael said, we're at the front end of the spear. We're doing sales and marketing and attraction. And once we have someone committed to the area, I pass that off to someone in a municipality, someone in the economic development area, who can move it through that second phase, that regulatory phase, so they can get an occupancy permit and licensing, et cetera. Those are areas I don't work in, in post-development fees, et cetera, all those regulatory areas. What we focused on, what we've been successful at, is building referral hub partnerships. So Bioindustrial Innovation Canada that was in Sarnia has moved into our region. And we work with that organization, for example, that helps startup companies and builds companies up and helps them grow. And we've had a number of referrals from that organization that have been very successful, and they're moving very well through the system. Green Center Canada is an organization embedded in Queens University and the Green Chemistry Group there at Innovation Park in Kingston. And we've had a number of referrals from them. Oftentimes, they're fairly agnostic about where a company goes. They want to see them grow and prosper. And so we've been successful working with them. Launch Lab is a government-funded organization, as is Ontario Centers of Excellence. All of these organizations invest Ottawa. We've developed relationships with over the last twelve to fifteen months, and we're actively getting referrals and continuing to partner and collaborate with those organizations. And we will continue to look for those kinds of opportunities to look with people moving forward. So how do we help people exactly? So we really are disciplined in our sales and marketing approach. And in terms of our services, we work very closely on advocacy work, and we work very closely with organizations in the provincial and federal government and municipal government. We do site tours for companies, help them find out the best location. We provide business intelligence. So we, as Michael said, we have very strong understanding of what's happening for business in Eastern Ontario. We understand the value chain, the supply chain. We understand where there's some gaps and where companies might fit in. And if they consider coming, we connect them with those folks. I can give some examples of that. One of the great challenges with rural economic development and with rural businesses scaling up is always access to capital. And so we feel we have really strong capabilities, building relationships with banks, traditional banks, with the Business Development Bank of Canada, with the local, say, Eastern Ontario Angel Network, and with private funders. And so we've done quite a bit of work in that area as well, helping companies find access to capital. In terms of the last twelve rolling months or fifteen rolling months almost now, we've been very active going out there and meeting businesses. In our customer relationship management system, we track all these key performance metrics very carefully. And so we've had over two hundred and twenty-five business-to-business meetings with potential clients, had eighty-eight stakeholder meetings. Presently, in our sales pipeline, we have thirty-six opportunities. We've brought in external investment from partners, the government, of one point three million dollars to help companies in this area grow and prosper. And we've supported the development of ninety-five jobs in the region. Just to drill down and provide you with another layer of information, Mayor Seo's very interested in seeing, you know, the granular detail around, this is taxpayer money, and we want to ensure you folks understand what kind of companies we're dealing with and what kind of opportunities exist to prove that there's a return on your investment and hopefully to provide you with some confidence in our activities. So as I said, we have a number of opportunities, thirty-six of them. I've outlined twelve here that are emblematic of the opportunities that exist. We have a number of bioindustrial clients. One client is working on converting cellulose products into a PET plastic. One client is working on converting a particular element of cellulose, another wood product, actually, into a product that increases the strength of materials. These opportunities are actually growing, this idea of converting an organic material into an industrial material. And those are exciting opportunities. As you can see here, one of those opportunities, which we hope closes in the next few weeks, actually, has two hundred and twenty-five jobs associated with it. And so these are really strong opportunities with real employers who are investing real money. Another company is a battery recycling company we've been working with since August, June. And if they moved into our neighborhood here, which we think they will, their investment will be a sixty-million-dollar plant that's working very closely with electronic vehicles and other companies that are requiring battery support and recycling. And so those are exciting opportunities. I guess the latest one, just last week, I started working with a company that is more in the agribusiness and food service business. They're a cider business that's also just starting, was just going to start to grow. They've made very, very significant investments. And they're looking to develop a very large brewery as well as part of that cider business. And so those are the kind of, I guess, a quick overview of the kind of companies we're working with, a little bit about the employment possibilities, the size of the investment, and the sort of the industries we're considering. So we'll be glad to take any questions, and maybe now's a good time before I ask Michael to come back up. Is there any questions I can take from him?
You've got mentioned down here you've established ninety-five jobs. Where are they established?
So they're across the region. And I tried to, with those examples I gave you before, give you an idea of the kinds of companies that we're working with. And those jobs, in economic development, it's not as though we're going in and creating a business and creating a job. We have defined services and... We have defined services and defined tactics that attract people to the region or help those people who are looking at the region build services and support networks to help them establish a beachhead here and then to grow. And so I guess what I'd say there is, if we have permission from the client to share that information, we're always glad to share that information. Oftentimes, our clients aren't necessarily looking to be publicized or to share their information, if that makes sense.
Can you really answer my question, where the ninety-five jobs are?
Like, exact places there, the companies? So if you'd like, I can touch base with those companies and provide that to Mayor Saeo if that's helpful.
Would be.
Yeah, sure. So being a big supporter of regionalization, thinking that it is definitely the future, going forward on our path of trying to avoid overlap and find efficiencies of services, how do you deal with overlap of what you do? I know you touched on sort of a little bit of how you may conflict a tiny bit with the United Counties, but staying away from tourism and that and focusing strictly on industry. How do you deal with the overlap when you're on end day and we're somewhere?
What a good, great question. So it's important, A, that we have a really defined business model, where we exactly define the services we offer and the type of tactics we take. We share that information with all the economic developers in the area, whether they're in the municipality or the United Counties. And then we work together really carefully. We're not involved, as you said, in retail and tourism, in planning, in any of those areas. We simply focus on attraction and then specific services to specific companies that have the opportunity to double in size. So I guess what I'd say is, we collaborate and communicate really effectively with those organizations. We do our best so that if there's opportunities where I can go in and work with those other organizations and provide my services, then we do that so that we work hand in glove in that situation. And then if those organizations need any support from me in terms of going and presenting or digital marketing functions or anything like that, then we provide that to them and work collaboratively. So oftentimes, we meet, we share files, ensure that if there's, if there is the same client, then we're offering complimentary services, as it were, to optimize those opportunities and accelerate those opportunities, rather than having sort of two redundant services.
One other one, and I'm sure it's just something that will get updated in the future, but in the one slide, is it still accurate, are Joe, Dave, and Jim still on?
Yeah, no, that's.
On this mission, or is that just?
Yeah, we've got to update that slide.
Last question, I follow you a lot on social media. Do you use other platforms to engage our ratepayers so that they know and understand? And do you aggressively search them out so that you're kind of promoting why they're spending the four dollars of their tax dollars or what amounts to one quarter of our economic development budget? So that it helps us justify that.
Right, yeah. Certainly, the way I manage my social media, I do my best to connect with local companies and local stakeholders as best I can. I just noticed I just started following you on Twitter. So we work hard through certain platforms, Twitter, Twitter being a primary focus, LinkedIn being another primary focus. And so we try to work with that local stakeholder group to ensure they understand. But certainly, one of the opportunities moving forward is to increase our communications capacity. I'm a real believer in developing those outcomes, so those jobs and companies coming here, and then sharing that information. It's an ongoing challenge to bring capacity, to build capacity, so that you have a sort of mature communications function while you're doing work, trying to attract applicants to the area. So I would say, we're doing our best. We can do better. And it's an ongoing challenge that we'll continue to drive forward with.
I'll build on that a little bit for Charlie, because it's always a battle if you're a sales and marketing organization, how much time, effort, money do you spend on educating the constituents on what you're doing? We understand. So we did run a pretty intensive social media campaign from October to January, so October of eighteen to January of nineteen. And the number's not accurate, but I believe it was sixteen hundred and ninety-five posts across Twitter, Facebook, and LinkedIn. Across, so every day, there was, I believe, a minimum of eight posts that were going out. But there was no paid component to it, so it was purely organic. So anybody who knows Facebook, for example, a Facebook page, ten percent of the whatever your posts actually gets seen by the people who follow you. We have very low following.
Very low.
Very low. And so until we make a decision to actually spend money using social media, it is very difficult to organically reach the local constituents. We are having our AGM coming up, and we just presented to the Chair and the Vice Chair, a board report. So we are going to, we have a board report that will be available for dissemination as well, but we have to think about how we do that. So, big fan of social media as a disseminating tool, but it's most affected as a paid. And so we have to make the decision to put a few thousand dollars on it.
I listened to Michael last month, I had twenty-seven thousand impressions on my Twitter account. So we're getting it over there, but we can do better. Thank you.
Mr. Packwood? Mayor, or the councillor?
Nope, nothing for me.
If I was to ask you, could you... I'm going to ask you somewhat blunt question. What would you say if I asked you, how much money have you brought into the into the region? What would you say?
And so into the St. Lawrence corridor region?
Corridor region.
So, and I apologize, if I could ask you a question back, could you define what you mean by money and what I mean? So I can give you a couple of different numbers.
Sure. How many jobs are out there that are paid jobs, that people are collecting money for them? And which in turn, they can go out and spend money in the community. So I think you mentioned that you had created ninety-nine jobs, or there's ninety-nine jobs coming into the area. Now, I'm assuming that's within the corridor. I mean, what kind of dollars are we looking at here?
Yeah, so we don't keep specific data on the jobs that are attracted. But if you used an average income of about fifty thousand, that'll give you the singular number of what the impact of those jobs, and then probably a one point two or one point three multiplier effect. So that's the, so thank you for the clarity on that. Some other numbers we could use is that we've brought in government funding of one point three million dollars to invest in local corporations to expand their operations. And then as an estimate, to date, we know about six million dollar in private investment to expand corporations as well. So, but I wish I could give you an exact number on the impact of jobs. We will over time, as we compare to historical numbers.
Yes, yes. I'm just referring to your, one of your slides with the green balls.
Yes.
As, are there any of these green balls firmly established within the corridor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I won't press.
One of the major employers that Charlie played a large role in bringing in has actually asked us not to discuss about them publicly, even though they are public, they have had job fairs, et cetera, because they are, they're very politically sensitive. So Alan represented almost fifty jobs, I believe. Forty to fifty, thirty-five jobs, sorry. I rounded up.
Fine, that's fine.
But they're growing.
But they're growing.
The company's still growing.
Yeah. In a non-public environment, we'd be very happy to share more detailed information.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, David? Okay, hearing none, again, I'll thank you very much for your presentation. And I'll extend the invitation, if you'd like to stay for the rest of our council meeting. You're most welcome to. Otherwise, it's still sunshiny out there.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your continued support as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to our number six discussion items. So we have done listed. We'll go to number seven, action information items. And the first one is seven A, P and G, and Ingredion Community Cleanup Day. And I believe, Mr. Spencer, would you just speak to that highlight things for us?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. As in the past ten years, P and G are having their Community Clean Day where members of the plant come out into the community. And Mike Lindberg has been a very strong supporter for us, lives in Johnstown, and has, over the last ten years, sorry, six years, provided us with anywhere from twenty-five to forty P and G employees to do work throughout the township, more focused on the Johnstown area. And this year, with some talks with Colleen Baldwin with Ingredion, they decided to do the same sort of scenario. And we spoke about two months ago, and I suggested that they do it on the same day that P and G are doing theirs. So that's what we've come up with. So Ingredion will be supplying fifteen workers on that day. And as you can see, the various items that we will be doing in Johnstown and in Cardinal. And my staff and I will provide the workers at the Ingredion a barbecue lunch down at the pavilion at noon hour. And the South Edwardsburg Rec Association does a luncheon, a barbecue luncheon, for Mike Lindberg and his staff at the Hall in Johnstown on that day as well. So this is just an information item, in case any members of council or the committee wish to stop by and see exactly what's going on on that day. I will have staff at both locations, and I will be floating back and forth between those locations on that day.
Good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spencer. And just one follow-up question to that. Approximately how many hours of cleanup will be done? Do they work from nine to three, or?
On average, they're there about seven hours.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions?
What times does it start, Mr. Spencer?
The Ingredion workers will start at eight o'clock, and I believe the P and G workers, I know last year that they had to report to the, to their plant first for a quick session, and then they all transported to Johnstown. Last year, I believe they got there at nine o'clock. So anywhere between eight and nine, they will be there.
Thank you.
So I'll just make this comment because there'd be, looks like, looks to me like there'd be two activity groups in two different places, one in Johnstown, the other in Cardinal. Now, I'm assuming that the largest barbecues will be around that twelve o'clock time slot. And I'm obligated to a St. Lawrence Economic Development Commission meeting, starting at one. So I'm probably not going to be able to get to either one of them. So I hope that someone from our staff will bring best wishes and greetings from the council. And if there are any council members available that can get to either of those barbecues, I'd appreciate extending my regrets as well. And I know that the work groups would appreciate seeing the faces of the elected representatives. So if anybody could make it in their calendar, please do so.
That's it.
Councillor?
No, I just, start times are eight and nine, and we'll be done about three, eh?
That's correct.
I'll try to drop in at both of them sometime during the day.
Mr. Packwood?
I think we're very lucky to get these people to do these things for us. And for a number of years, it's been going on.
But I just got one thing. So I think, through the Chair if I can, to Deputy Clerk. Last year, I think you prepared a letter of recognition that I sent out to Mr. Lindberg. If you could do that for me again, I'd appreciate it. We'll send one to each, Ms. Lindberg and Colleen. Thanks very much.
And just one final question, which I just thought of, Mr. Spencer, and that is, does this go rain or shine?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, if it's raining, we'll be doing some work at the pavilion in Cardinal, painting the picnic tables underneath the pavilion area.
Thank you. Councillor?
This has been going on for a while, I know, but I know they're volunteers, and I know they're getting paid, but they still volunteer and leave their work. It's like, be there. Is the township giving any little recognition to them? Like a township pin or anything to the ones that worked there for the day?
I think last year was just a letter to Mr. Lindberg. And what a good idea of councillor. I don't know. Do you have those kind of giveaway pins?
Through the Chair. We have in the past, I have. I've provided, we didn't last year, but in past years, we've provided a township golf shirt to Mr. Lindberg and to Jason Broad, who used to be the one that instrumented the one out here in Spencival. He was a P and G employee. I still believe he is. And so in the past, we had given township memorabilia and...
Through the Chair, do we have pins?
Yes.
Maybe if the councillors that were going to go there could pick up some pins at the office and take them with them.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, thank you for that. We'll move on to seven B, which is South Dundas Automatic Aid Agreement, which we have in front of us. And I believe the Chief is going to speak to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you tonight is a proposed automatic aid agreement with South Dundas. The existing agreement's been in place since 2012, been working very well. We decided to do an update because there were some changes with the recommendations from the OFM. And one of the items was the definition of fire protection services. In the Fire Prevention Protection Act specifies public education and fire prevention. So our old agreement kind of indicates that we will provide that to them, which obviously we don't. We just provide emergency services. So that was one of the main reasons that we decided to do the update. We also have an agreement with Prescott, where they come to us. In North Grenville, we provide a little bit of a response into North Grenville. And obviously, the benefit is the municipality experiencing the emergency. We receive fire services from the closest available fire department. And it gives the citizens a seamless service through the elimination of service boundaries. So we can improve response times, and it's better for everybody that the closest emergency responder can get there.
Thank you. Questions? I'll start with Councillor Gilmore.
I just had one cheek where, the ones that are covering for mutual, they're first responders. In other words, on County Road to the civic number one zero zero one zero to one zero one oh nine. Airquad responds first, is that right?
Through the Chair, no, Airquad only responds if it's a structure fire.
Right.
If it's anything less, we are the only department responding.
Oh, okay. So they're not first respond on everything. It's just a structure fire only. This is just, thank you so much.
Can we clarify that? Even if it's a structure fire, we respond first?
Yes, we respond first for all emergencies. But South Dundas will only respond if we request or if it's a major emergency. It would have to be a structure fire, probably.
So several other questions, if I may? So through the Chair. First of all, I noticed that this now is called an automatic aid agreement, and I understand what it means. We're providing first response in certain geographical areas. So am I to distinguish between an automatic aid agreement and a mutual aid agreement? They're two different animals?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So that's the first thing. And so now what I have in front of me here is the first one that I've seen, actually, this automatic aid agreement. So I have some problems with it in some senses. And I don't know whether there's a template that has been, maybe there's some errors in the cut and paste or what it is, but I'll give you some examples. The second whereas of this one that I have in front of me, from an English point of view, it doesn't hang together. And so there's a, needs to be a correction in the English there someplace, because it doesn't read as a sentence. And I had the same comment with regard to the operative clause when we're talking about in this agreement, automatic aid agreements. And then it goes on to sub one and sub two. And when you read those, it's, they're vague in my mind. And when you read those, it's, they're vague in my mind. So I just had those comments, and I'm hoping that the language can be cleaned up a bit before we get to the actual signing of the document. And then, when I go to item seven, or what I'm gonna call clause seven, I'm getting, uh, these agreements have been in place for some time, do we actually do invoices? We say we're gonna invoice them within ninety days, but do we actually do invoices when we re, when we, uh, provide services per this agreement?
Through, through the chair, yes, we do.
Oh, okay, all right, and then later on, it says we use the Ministry of Transport, uh, Transport Rates. And then the last question, Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, sort of revolves around clause number nineteen. And in clause number nineteen, um, we're undertaking to make sure that there's certain insurance coverages in place, uh, at clause nineteen A and at clause nineteen D and nineteen E. So, my question is, have we in fact verified these coverages, uh, with our, uh, with our broker to ensure that these coverages, as described in this document, are in fact in place in our insurance program? Uh, and do we have, do we have some sort of a paper trail that will give, uh, signatories to this agreement comfort to know that clause nineteen has been fully vetted through the insurance program? So I'll just leave those hanging, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to have to get back to you on it?
Well, I think, uh, I think that at the time of signature, this is gonna be going to, uh, council, I believe, on the twenty-fourth, and then we'll, and I believe if I've read this, uh, properly, it's signed by the mayor and the, the mayor and the chief and the mayor and the C A O.
Clerk.
And mayor and the clerk, so prior to signature, I'd like to see the letter from the insurance company, just so that I've got comfort that the coverages are all as according to this document.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, do you have anything? Counselor Hunter?
Uh, this is the same agreement, uh, we enter, aim at all the township recover, but there we do a third recovery for North Grenville and Augusta too, don't we?
So through the chair, we do have an agreement with North Grenville, and I think we have an ancient agreement with, with Augusta, but I don't think it's, uh, it's in, in place anymore.
We do respond there, don't we?
We do.
We should have an agreement then.
I'm pretty sure council will be seeing one shortly.
That, that was my question there, I'm, we're gonna update all of these, is that the plan?
That is the plan.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Packwood? Okay, hearing nothing? Do you have a recommendation on this? Yes, we do, there is a recommendation, do I have a mover? Mr. Mayor and, uh, secondaire, Mr. Counselor Hunter, all call the question, all in favor of, in favor of the recommendation?
Hi.
Gary, thank you. And that moves us on to the temporary road closure request, uh, which we heard earlier from, uh, Hannah Lee regarding Water Street. We've all had a chance to, uh, read the, uh, the letter, and we do have a recommendation, and the recommendation reads that committee recommend that council, one, approve the request for the closure of Water Street on Sunday, July fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, between ten A M. and five P M. local time, and direct staff to supply barricades and work with the S B C C to ensure notification is provided to the affected resident and emergency services. Do I have a mover for the recommendation? I, I guess I should ask if there's any questions first. Okay, hearing none, uh, do I have a mover for the recommendation? Mr. Packwood, do I have a secondaire? Counselor Dilma? Uh, I'll ask the question, all in favor? Gary, thank you. And, uh, moving on, uh, to seven D, which is the half-load restriction bylaw, and I believe the Director of Operations will, uh, will highlight, uh, this for us. We do have a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, what we're, we're looking at is to, uh, to pass a bylaw for half-load restrictions. Typically, what we've been doing is, uh, completing those half-load restrictions at the same, uh, time and duration as the county, um, and what we're looking at is incorporating our own, that gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Thank you, any, um, any questions? Mr. Mayor?
So, we've never had a half-load restriction bylaw? Which means that our signs really were just signs, really. Um, so, if I can, through the chair, I have some, some questions with regard to clause one. And, um, I'm just gonna read it and see if it makes, uh, see if it hangs together when I read it out loud. The provisions of section one twenty-two of the Highway Traffic Act apply to all highways under the jurisdiction of the Township Edwardsburg Cardinal during the period from the first day of March to the thirtieth day of April inclusive, in each and every year, and may be extended when deemed necessary by the road superintendent. So, my question is, who is it that has the authority to extend the period? I mean, it's clear that the road superintendent has the authority to deem it necessary, but that doesn't also make it clear that he has the authority to extend it. I mean, I'm looking at this as a council bylaw, council is standing behind this bylaw once it's passed, but it's not exactly clear that him deeming it to be necessary to be extended is the same as having the authority to extend it, two different things there. So who has the authority to extend? And that should be clarified within the bylaw. I'm not speaking French here.
So, so through, so, so through, so through the chair, the, n- naturally, the intent was for the, the road superintendent to have that authority to extend that timeframe.
Okay, and I thought that was the intent, but that's not what that says.
If it would suit council, if I may, through the chair, we could just simply insert the words, "when deemed necessary and authorized by the road superintendent."
It's all takes, yep. Done deal. That makes it clear.
Now, we'll let, we'll let change come to council on Monday.
You'll see the change in the bylaw when you see it.
Do you have any other, uh, Counselor Hunter?
Uh, I may be like the mayor, I may be reading things wrong here, but the way it reads to me is he has the authority to extend it. But this covers all highways and roads in one swipe. Or does it give them the authority for, like, newer road having the authority to keep one particular road under half-load instead of all?
So, I, I, I think un- uh, under clause one, if it's deemed, uh, the, the need to extend that, then that would be where the authorization comes from and with the, with the appropriate signage erected.
Is that the way you interpret it?
Yeah.
It just reads all the roads, it says they're not in, the individual roads.
Through, 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 through the chair, uh, if you, if you read clause two, that's, that's more specific to a particular road?
All right. Mr. Packwood?
Oh.
Any questions? Okay, we have a recommendation, and the recommendation reads that, uh, committee recommend that council adopt the half-load restrictions bylaw as attached?
And amended.
As and amended, or as and amended? Can I have a mover? Mr. Packwood, the secondaire, Counselor Hunter, I'll call the question, all in favor? Gary, thank you. And now we go to seven E, the A T V Club, uh, use of, uh, rap on unopened road allowance, and I do believe that, uh, our Director of Operations would like to speak to this as well.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, we, we've had, uh, requests from the A T, A T V Club to use recycled asphalt pavement as fill material and, uh, unopened road allowances on their trail network. Uh, they, they have provided a couple, uh, studies, uh, in, uh, that, used in the, in the states for, for, for different applications, but none, uh, really apply to, to using it as a fill, uh, material. Uh, doing some additional research through the Ontario Ministry of Environment. There's certain, um, um, products or what they would consider as appropriate, uh, fill material in the recycled asphalt pavement, is, it does not, uh, fit into that category. So as such, the recommendation is that only, uh, only materials that, uh, that meet that definition of the, uh, the M O E be used on, on, on unopened road allowances.
Thank you, questions? Hearing none, we do have a recommendation, and the recommendation reads that committee recommends that council only permit the use of fill material as defined by the Ontario Ministry of the Environment, M E O, sorry, M O E, in their proposed excess soil policy framework for repairs on unopened road allowances. Do I have a mover? Mr. Counselor Hunter and a secondaire? Mr. Packwood, thank you, uh, all in favor? Opposed, if any? None carried. Thank you. And our next item is greater disposal report, and, uh, Director of Operations, would you, uh, speak to this?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, at the last meeting, uh, staff was directed to, uh, to, to provide the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen repairs and, and, and maintenance for the two graders along with hours and, and costs, and, uh, it's provided, uh, for you.
Thank you. Questions, yes?
So first of all, through the chair, which is greater number one, the ninety-seven or the eighty-nine?
Uh, greater number one is the ninety-seven.
So greater number one is the old, is the newer one?
Correct.
With the lesser hours, and greater number two is the older one with the greater hours?
Correct.
And greater number two is getting less hours per year?
That's correct.
And then, greater number two is getting, the maintenance costs are lower on greater number two in twenty eighteen, and lower on greater number two in twen- in nine, in, in twenty nineteen. Now, the, the asterisk pertaining to, uh, one thousand four hundred and one dollars and seventy-four cents, where, where, I don't see where that asterisk goes.
So the, the, the fourteen hundred dollars was, uh, the floating rental costs, uh, while both graders were down, and that is, uh, it was, uh, was, was charged to the, uh, to, to greater one, the ninety-seven grader.
Okay, so it's included in the twenty-four thousand?
It is not.
Oh, it's not included?
It is not included, no.
Okay. And then, what is the, uh, what is the, the reference to the, um, to the two check sheets? Are they just examples of what the check sheets look like?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so in this particular case, it's greater number two, and, uh, if I look someplace on here, I haven't figured out that, it looked like they were consecutive days.
Correct.
Yes, June third to June fourth.
Correct.
And it looks like it put on nine hours during the interim period of time. So I see how that works. And then, on the next page, we see the maintenance and repairs for greater one and greater two. Now, what is the reason that on, on the greater two page, the, the report, the sort of this chair, the step reported at the bottom of the page doesn't seem to be in the same format as the previous one? Doesn't show the annual budget, doesn't show year-to-date committed, and it shows budget remaining as being negative. So, was there no, um, budget for repairs to greater two?
Uh, through, through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, and then greater number two is the older one?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no budget for it? And what is the, and so the budget remaining for greater one has already been, excuse me, I'm saying that the wrong way. It, it, as the way I'm reading the, the, the chart for greater one is that it has already exceeded its budget for repairs, is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Right. So there's no chance of robbing from Peter to pay Paul here? And what is the current activity of these two, uh, pieces of equipment? I mean, I, I think the spring grading has been done, has it?
Through, through the chair, that is correct, spring, spring grading has been, has been completed, uh, maintenance gravel, uh, applied, and the majority of dust suppressant, uh, down, so, um, at, at, at present time, it, it will be more spot repairs as, as required over the next few months.
Okay, and then, and on page two of two, which is the first sec, the, the back page of the first page, uh, there's that twenty-four thousand eight twenty-two eighty-nine repair to greater one, and that's what is largely responsible, or at least I take that is largely responsible, for putting it over its annual budget, because its annual budget was eighteen, and then actually, well, that's strange. Why do those numbers not agree?
So if you, if you, if you take the twenty-four eight two two and add the fourteen oh one, you'll, you'll, you'll come up with the twenty-six.
Oh, okay, all right, so on the twenty-four eight twenty-two, it's not included, and on the report on the next page, it is included?
That is correct.
Okay, so, what we see here, uh, from this report is that there was there, was there one single item in the twenty-nineteen that, that captured us, hit us wrong? Why, why is it twenty-four?
Yeah, so, so through the, through, through the chair, if you, if you look at the last particular item on, uh, April twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, that's the Strongco, that's the, that's the master cylinder, uh, repair of, of sixteen thousand, uh, dollars. That, that's, that's the particular item that was at a service for, for approximately, uh, three weeks' time. That's the particular item that was at a service for approximately three weeks' time. So minus that particular repair, the unit's been running quite well.
Okay. That was the killer.
Yeah, that was the killer. So on this line item on the budget, we're already blowing it by a bunch of things.
And do you have any other questions? Any questions? That's the table. Mr. Packwood?
What would be the average lifespan of the... On one of those graders' engine blocks? Like, they're getting up there? Are they twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand hours?
No, the greater... The eighty-nine grader is fourteen thousand four hundred and six hours, and greater one is eight thousand eight hundred ninety-nine, so...
What I'm getting at is, what is the expected life of the engines in those machines? Just a guess?
I would say those Champion graders were the Cadillac of... So I would expect with this repair that the ninety-seven will... That that engine will be functioning for a long time again.
Yeah.
For many years.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor?
Mr. Grant, so what is your recommendation on that? Would it... I don't want to put words in your mouth, but should we get rid of greater two or... And have we thought maybe of leasing something as we need it per month or per hour?
Through the chair, on the second item, you would be looking at anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for renting a grader. So you would be in the range of four thousand dollars a week.
And we use it for a hundred and thirty hours, roughly?
Well, if you take the... If you take the, for instance, the 2018 year and you had six hundred and eight hours, if you times that by, you know, the hundred dollars an hour, you're in the sixty-one thousand dollar range.
Okay, the question one then. What do you recommend? Do you recommend getting rid of greater two or keep them at both?
As it sits right now, as mentioned earlier in the notes, the original plan was with respect to surface treatment program, to bring down the gravel kilometers sufficient enough for one grader to be able to maintain those roads. We're not at that stage. We still have sixty, maybe sixty-five kilometers of gravel road. So at this stage, if you were to dispose of the eighty-nine grader, it would probably be appropriate to look at leasing a unit similar to the excavator where you could lease with the option to buy in that end and have that flexibility.
What's our magic number for one grader? You're saying we've got sixty-five kilometer road? What's our magic number, or is there...
Well, I would say that you're looking at thirty-five kilometers.
Yeah. We've got a long ways going.
There... Yeah, there was a three-year... Well, six years, but every second year to complete, to bring that down close to that thirty-five.
How many per year, roughly?
Well, we would be going close to ten kilometers every second year.
Anything else? Okay, there's no recommendation on this. This is an information item, so we'll move on. And that brings us to number eight, Counselor Inquiries, Notice of Motion. Do we have any? Counselor Hunter?
I want inquiry, or... I brought up a while, quite a few meetings ago, about changing the parking regulations on South Street and Black Street. I keep forgetting the name of it. South Street, East West there.
Is it Irving?
Yeah. South and Irving Street there to consider putting no parking on one side of those streets, mainly due to if we're going to keep having functions down at the mill, there are very little parking down there, and they start parking on both sides of those streets, and Spencer Fair, they're parking both sides of those streets, and when they do, a car can hardly get through those streets, let alone an emergency vehicle if anything happened. And I really think we should be having our operation manager look into which side of the street. I have my views, but I... Which side it should be, but I think we need to be doing something there before something seriously happens there. I know I've had complaints from residents on both those streets about not being able to get up and down the street there. Very narrow little streets to start with, and when you park cars on both sides, it's impossible to get through them. And I know during the election, two or three, when I was doing door to door, brought up the thing there that we're getting old of what happens if I take a heart attack on a fair day or something at the mill, ammunition's going to be able to get to me, and nobody's going to know where those owners of those cars are to get to move, so...
It's a good point, Counselor Hunter. So could we ask staff to look into that and give us a report at another meeting?
That's the will of the committee, yeah.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that or anything?
Consensus is fine, everybody's on board.
Just do a quick consensus in favor of Mr. Hunter's, Counselor Hunter's, recommendation? I think we have it. I think you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item, number nine, is the Mayor's Report.
So a few things to report. First of all, with regard to the Canada, Ontario Infrastructure Bilaberal Agreement for the Rural and Northern Fund Roads and Bridges, you know, council will recall that we submitted an application for Rooney Road. So I've been trying to determine how to lobby that application without being overly offensive. I did meet with... In the MP's office, NPP's office, on Thursday, June the sixth, and asked if we could have some assistance from that office with his application, and I think that's about the best I can do at this point in time. Just to report that on Wednesday, June the twelfth, the CIO and I had a teleconference with the Minister of... Deputy Minister in the Office of the Minister of Transportation concerning the Ontario Job Site Challenge and our nomination of the Cedar Grove Road Site as a five hundred, two thousand to fifteen hundred acre site that might serve the province as a potential auto assembly plant or auto manufacturing plant. So it was the Deputy Minister that requested the telephone conference. Lasted the better part of half an hour, and we were invited to attend at his office on July the second and make the pitch directly. I used the little binders that... I don't know whether I've distributed them to Counsel or not. I think I have.
Yes, Chair.
But we use those little binders as kind of our cheat sheet, and I'm going to update those binders before the meeting in July the second. And I think we want to take it just a little bit more aggressively. And consequently, I've been at the County GIS Office, and I've got the County GIS people working on some more detailed maps for me as to how we can bring that site to Ontario Certified Site Investment Ready. Also spoke to Deputy Ministers about... Deputy Minister about several mechanisms that we could use to... So the township would have access to land that we don't actually own, it's provincially owned land. We really can't do the studies that we need to do on that land unless they appoint us as their agent. So that's the pitch that we'll be making on July the second. I'm going to talk just a minute about the Grenville Community Futures Development Corporation. Their Annual General Meeting will be held on Friday, June the twenty-first, starting with registration at eight o'clock in Kemphill. The deputy clerk has the location. I just can't remember. It's at the new former Kemphill Agriculture College Site. But those Annual General Meetings are always very worthwhile, and as you may know, and as has been mentioned several times in the press, there's some of the old programs have disappeared, and there's a new program in place now, which I think is going to be a little bit harder for them to deliver because the new program has a sort of a beginning level of fifty thousand dollar investment. So it's going to be a bit touchy. And the last thing I want to mention in the Mayor's Report is the Highway 401 closure and the lack of traffic control at the two critical junctions, County Road Two and County Road Sixteen in Johnstown, and County Road Two and County Road Twenty-two in Cardinal. You all saw the little report that I put together. I did have a long and very serious conversation with the inspector about three days later, and the inspector shared some serious operational matters that were facing the detachment at that point, on that day. Asked me not to be public about them, but if there are individual counselors that want to know more about what was actually happening with the detachment staff at that period of time and why there was no traffic control officer, I can sort of shed some light on that. But suffice it to say that I've... While I'm understanding the restraints that the inspector is under and their operational restraints, and she couldn't get help from the Leeds Detachment, she had brought in all of the officers that were on duty from the Kemphill Detachment. There were just too many things going on. That's... I can understand it, but I can't accept it. Made that very clear. I can understand it, but I can't accept it, and that something has to be done to deal with this. Had a discussion in the NPP's office about this issue and said the same thing. I can understand the restraints that the inspector is dealing with, but we can't accept them, and something has to be done. And if it involves us looking for volunteers and providing them with traffic control training, then that's what we may have to do, and I'm signaling that to council because that may be the only way that we can reassure ourselves that those two critical junctions have traffic control. And then so the question for the council is going to be, do you want to undertake the expense and the risk of the training and the supervision that's going to be required of volunteers, no matter where we might get them? And do you want to go to that extent to put a traffic control person at those junction points when Highway 401 is closed in both directions? And I just leave that as a sort of a challenge for council to ruminate about, but I think we'll have to deal with it at some point because it just looks to me that with the high activity level that the inspector is experiencing within the Grenville Detachment, you cannot really count on that source for traffic control officers. And I'll leave that at that point.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question regarding that? And that question would be, is there something the counties could do about this problem because they have access to flag people, so on and so forth? And it is broad over the entire region. Is it something the counties could get about that?
Well, first of all, they don't have access to flag people. That's the first thing.
Well, they hardly.
No, they don't. The only flag people that the county uses is when they're doing a job of their own. They use their own people as flag people. So in that sense, they have... But all of the people that they use have other jobs that they're responsible for.
So it's the construction company that hires them?
Yes, yes. When there's a contract underway, it's the construction company that's required for providing. Now, if you recall, there was a Highway 401... There was a planned closure of Highway 401 west of Cardinal about a month ago, and in that case, it was extremely well-planned. We all knew exactly when it was going to happen. The contract... It was a Department of Trans... Ministry of Transportation contract to replace a failed culvert, and the ministry actually hired an off-duty policeman to provide traffic control at Shanley Road. So in that case, everything seemed to go okay because the ministry had actually shelled out the money to hire the off-duty policeman, and it was scheduled in advance in his off-duty hours. So how do you schedule for emergencies is the question? That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Your report. Okay. Any conversation, any questions? Mr. Packwood?
Using volunteers as traffic control people? I don't think so because liability and everything for the township. I can see using off-duty police officers, but definitely not volunteers. Maybe you're playing around with all these tractor-traders and everything and liability that township would be in. I don't think it'd be a good idea myself. That's all I can say.
Thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. It is question period. I see no one in the gallery, so we'll move on, and I believe the next session, the next number is closed session. Do we have a mover for that? I'm not aware of who it is.
I have a sheet in front of me.
So it's copy?
Yeah, so does mine.
I think the Deputy Mayor has the question.
Yes?
Shall I have John sign it before I do it?
And then we will... Prior to the closed session, we'll take a five-minute bathroom break if anyone needs it.
Okay. So moved by myself, seconded by Counselor John Hunter, that the Committee of the Whole proceeds into closed session at eight seventeen PM. In order to address a matter pertaining to proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board, specifically industrial land, receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, specifically minutes of closed session dated September seventeenth, twenty-eighteen.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, that's for right now to come out of the closed session.
The closed is now end at eight forty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I guess what is next is our adjournment.
No, reporting out from the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I have the minutes. Well, I have the minutes from the closed session, Mr. Chairman. It's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dillabod, that the Committee of the Whole approves the minutes of the closed session dated September 17, 2018.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carry it. Thank you.
And then if, if I may, Mr. Chair, the report out would be that the CIO was directed to prepare an offer to purchase us per discussion.
Do we have to, do we have to carry that? Okay, thank you. Okay, so now is adjournment, and who, and who has that?
I have, I have that. Moved, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor John Hunter, that the Committee of the Whole does now adjourn at 8:50 PM. You've got John Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.